Goes in the hallway. Okay, we on? On that? Okay. All right, all right, we're gonna reconvene. So I wanna open first, I wanna take a straw vote from the council, 'cause I just wanna see where the council's landing on this and how much dialogue we're gonna be facing here. Just judging from the room that doesn't matter what decision we make, half are gonna be happy and half are gonna be sad, with the exception of Barbara Abel, who's the only one I found in the middle.[79.20][79.20](Laughter). You're rare, Barbara. If I could, just kinda take a straw vote of council members of what your thoughts are, where you are, I know where I'm at on it, so...
You know, Clark, I'd like to just explain my position.
Okay.
Yeah. Before... So I guess that means, do you want me to go first?
Well...[109.42][109.42](Laughter).
He who speaks first.[112.14][112.14](Laughter).
So, um, all right. All right, so this has been a tough, tough issue to deal with. I mean, these are always the hardest things to deal with when you have emotions running high. Here you have, one hand, a person who wants to come to Brisbane, build their dream home, and on the other side, you have friends and neighbors who feel that perhaps they're losing something that is, you know, part of the quality of life of living in Brisbane. It's also been difficult to hear folks who I know are really close friends talk about each other in not-so-kind terms. And, you know, I hope that, you know, this is just, you know, one issue, that, you know, they can just be able to move on from it and not have it affect their long-term friendships, 'cause I've seen these folks, you know, do a lot of great good in the community together, and I hope that, you know, that continues to be the case. So, you know, back in the day, 2006, I was a planning commissioner, and I dealt with this, this matter. At the time, I was the chair, and so my role as being the chair was to help guide that commission to, you know, to look at what was the law of the land, and use that to help, you know, the parties come together and come up with compromise that hopefully, you know, would satisfy to a certain degree, you know, all the folks that were involved. And I felt that, you know, at the end of the day, we were able to do that. We had a lot of meetings, and it was just as contentious as it is today. But in the end, we were able to come to a resolution that seemed to work. Of course, in the end, that person didn't build their home, the permit expired, and here we are today. Of course, you know, just because something was approved in the past doesn't mean that you have to approve it in the future, especially if the rules change. But you do look at that, and you use it to help guide you. And so it was, it was nice to have the applicant come before us, and, you know, 'cause we hadn't heard from the applicant yet, you know, why he bought the house, you know, what was, you know, his intent for designing the home the way that he wanted to. And, you know, you think about it, it makes sense, you know, something was approved before, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna design it that way, and, yeah, there were issues with, with the previous, uh, project, and so I'll modify my plan to meet those guidelines, so I don't have to have a variance. And so that, that's what he did. You know, I think we all have to be honest with each other. Whatever would be built there is going to affect the views of the bay from central Brisbane, looking through that view corridor. You know, if you, you know, if that house was built, say, in the 60s or the 70s, I don't think that the folks that bought their homes in the 80s or 90s would've said, "Oh, you know, that house out there, that's ruining my view, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna purchase this house." No, they would've looked out at that view, that house would've been there, but the overall view still would've been, you know, pretty sweet, and they would've, they would've said, "Okay, I'm gonna buy this home." What makes it hard is that we've lived with this vacant lot for years, and so now there's this, you know, potential for change. And sometimes change can be, you know, kinda messy. But as a council member, you know, I have to, I have to, you know, look at, at the ordinance. You know, just like our planning commission, you know, they looked at that ordinance, and they did a bang-up job. I mean, they were in a tough position. You know, planning commissioners, they don't, they don't set policy, they have to interpret policy. And I was very impressed with all of the planning commissioners who came up and spoke at the last hearing, because they, not only did they, they put a lot of thought and effort into their decisions, but they also spoke from the heart, too. And, and they balanced that. And I know that some of those, those planning commissioners, they have very strong environmental backgrounds, you know, they really do. And yet here, you know, they, they looked at the ordinance and they interpreted it in the way that they felt was fair. And I, I agree with, with their decision. So, that's where I stand. I'm in favor of, of the, the planning commission's decision to allow the home to be built as is.
Okay. Lori? A little back and forth here.
Okay. So as I mentioned, I've spent a substantial amount of time considering this. It's sort of been on my mind for the last few weeks, at least, and I understand that there's, there's merits to both sides of the argument, and it's, it's really hard to be in my position to be, to be balancing those interests. I understand there are, you know, lots of people, including myself, who really care about protecting the mountain, and that's why we all live here in Brisbane. And I understand as well that we need to acknowledge and, you know, understand that and recognize that there are rights of private property owners to, to build on their properties. In looking at this ordinance, I see that there are a lot of weaknesses with it, and that's not something that we can deal with right now. We have to interpret the ordinance and apply it as it's written. And if, you know, we so choose and desire, then at a later date, we can look at the ordinance and see if there's any clarification that can be made, but we have to apply the ordinance as it's written. The ordinance, as our city attorney mentioned, does provide broad discretion to the planning commission and ultimately the city council to decide whether or not the particular project complies with the required findings in the design review. And the ordinance reflects the general plan policies and programs which strive to strike a balance between protecting the ridgeline and the mountain views and the public's benefit while recognizing the private rights of property owners. And I've seen, I've heard a lot of, I think, confusion about the ordinance and about whether it protects the ridgelines of the park, and that's not what it's about. It's about, it's about protecting the, you know, the view corridors and the vistas, but it, it's about whether to allow development on a ridgeline. It's called the ridgeline ordinance, in my opinion, because it looks at locations, lots that are located on a ridgeline as identified under the ordinance. So we need to, you know, understand that distinction. And looking at the, why the ordinance was amended, you know, previously there was the variance procedure, and now we have the design review. So, you know, I asked myself, well, how, how can you possibly have a project that, quote, "preserves a view" when, you know, it's a house? How can a house preserve a view? It has to impact a view. So I kind of grappled with that, and I went back and I read all the prior staff reports and talked to our city attorney, and, you know, what I've come to understand is that, you know, it can't be that no project can go forward under this ordinance, that it has to, you know, preserve a view in the strict meaning of the word "preserve," because if that were the case, then no project could possibly be in compliance with this ordinance. And that wasn't the intent. So there has to be some room for a project to preserve a view within the meaning of the ordinance, whether that means it substantially preserves a view, you know, I don't know what that line exactly is, but it can't be a strict reading of the statute, 'cause that doesn't make any sense. As the city attorney mentioned, it's really, the precedent issue, I'm not really concerned about that, because I think, you know, we do have to look at it on a case-by-case determination and view every project differently. And of course, you know, we wanna, you know, make sure that our mountain is preserved, but we can't be afraid to allow any project to go forward, period, because of those, those goals. So, in interpreting this, this ordinance, you know, first I looked at the plain language, and it wasn't very clear. So then, if it's ambiguous, you look to the legislative intent. And so I went back, and I, like I said, I looked at the legislative histories and the, you know, the, the staff reports, and what's interesting is that everyone's asking themselves, "Well, is this a view of community-wide value?" Well, the way I read the statute is, it actually already designates that the views from these locations are of community-wide value, and the question, that's a given. So the question really, then, is, does it impact the view, and at what level? So, and I found it interesting that we chose these locations, because when I went out to the Bay Trail along the lagoon, first of all, I felt like I was gonna get hit by a car, because there were just cars whizzing by, and it didn't feel like a very friendly environment to people taking a walk, to be honest. I know there are people who say they go on that part of the Bay Trail by the lagoon quite often, and, and it sounds, it sounds like a great form of exercise, perhaps if you're on a bike, but it's not very amenable to walking, just because it's not very pedestrian-friendly. And then I went out to the, well, first of all, so from that view, when you, when I looked up, you know, I could see the story poles as I walked further south, but what was interesting was, the first thing I noticed were the houses along to Laurie Hill. And I thought, you know, because they're so far forward, you know, they're not in the background, they're in the foreground, that was quite noticeable. And then as I walked further south, I, they became less visible, and then I began to see the story poles and, you know, this broad vista of the mountain behind it. And to me, the vistas were, were still quite spectacular. The story poles were visible, but I didn't think that they substantially impacted the views. And the reason for, you know, my opinion is because when I, I looked at, actually, there's a staff report that talks about the views from June 9th, 2011, and it says that the intent of the ordinance was to look at, quote, "panoramic photo montages of the views from the Bay Trail along the lagoon and Sierra Point shorelines." I looked up, what is a panoramic photo montage? Apparently, it's when you take pictures and splice them and join them together to form one picture, sort of what Luc Bouchard did. So I found it very interesting, then, that we were, you know, that the planning commission had looked at pictures that were, you know, at different zoomed-in levels, when, according to my reading of the staff report, it seemed that we really should be looking at it, you know, as a naked-eye view simulated as much as possible, and if you have to look at a picture, then you take several pictures and splice them together to look at this panoramic photo montage. And the staff report actually specifies that the views from certain locations like Firth Park were deemed to be too close, and Mission Blue Center was deemed to be too distant as to be included in the statute. So those two locations were specifically exempted from the statute. So I wasn't involved in the process back then, and I, I can't say I entirely agree with the locations as to, you know, what is of community-wide value. I could certainly see other locations in town as well being of community-wide value for views of the mountain, but that's what the statute says. So we look at those two locations, and when, like I said, when you look at those views, it doesn't appear that it provides a substantial impact, because you have such a large vista, and it's not, it's not in the, you still have the mountain right behind it, unlike some houses, which you can see as you walk south along the lagoon, you see, like, there's this one white house, which I don't know what road it's on, but it's, it's clearly more visible. It looks like it's just above bayshore, and that provides, in my opinion, even more substantial impact, but it's already built. So then after I went to the lagoon, I went to Sierra Point shoreline, and what struck me there was the freeway. I could barely see the view beyond it, because I could only hear traffic and see cars whizzing by, and it was quite isolated. I actually felt like, you know, I didn't even know if it was safe for me to be walking there, because it got pretty isolated as I approached closer to the freeway. So, but those are the locations that are, you know, according to the statute, to be deemed of community-wide value. And from that location at the Sierra Point shoreline, I was even further back, and the story poles appeared even more distant and less significant in comparison to the vista. So then, you know, I look at the, the ordinance findings, and, you know... So I guess my, my analysis, the way I go about it is, you know, number one, would the development result in view impacts on the park as seen from those two locations? Yes, you can see the story poles. If so, are, are those views that are impacted of community-wide value? I believe that they are, because it's written into the statute that those locations are deemed to be of community-wide value. And then, number three, does the proposal take adequate steps in its design to preserve those views? And that's really the hard question. I believe that the design does take adequate steps to minimize the view impacts, and I'm interested to hear whether anything else can be done. That's why I'd like to hear from the applicant about what other steps could be done. But if this is the maximum, then I believe that, you know, we have to balance it in favor of allowing this to go forward. It places the home as far down on the lot as possible while maintaining the butterfly corridor at the rear of the lot. It maintains a building height of 27 feet, which is below the 35-foot height limit. It keeps the, keeps the roofline at a relatively low pitch. It orients the home in such a way that the bulk is minimized, and it, it's excavated to integrate the first floor of the home into the hillside. So if the design could be mitigated further, I would be open to hearing about that, but as it stands, I, I think that it, it does take adequate steps to preserve those views when balancing the interests of the community.
Okay.
Sorry, that was long.
I know Ray likes to go last. Terry?[1183.92][1183.92](Laughter).
So, if we're doing a straw poll and not going through every specifics on why I've come to a decision, which is what I thought the intent was, I think that this design could be better. I think that we could have an articulated roof, we could reduce the bulk. I think that it does impact views of community-wide value. Story poles, of course, when you're looking from far away, they don't look like much, 'cause you're looking at a twig sticking up. But if you put the bulk of the home there, and you put the walls and the reflective, you know, the glass, it's going to be there, and it's going to impact the views. So, between the view ordinance, which I do think we need to look at the precedence it sets, because it will give the idea of what's accepted and what's not. And I don't think that this was the first plan that this applicant brought to us. They didn't make any, weren't asked to make any major revisions, or even minor revisions to the plan they brought forward. It's, I think that there has got to be a way that they can, that the applicant can bring something that fits more with the ridgeline, respects the topography, and, and still is a fine, beautiful home. This project is exactly at the maximum-allowed florea ratio, and by requesting something that is more in tune with the hillside, I don't think that we are requiring too much of the applicant or the architect. I don't think that it would be, need to be significantly smaller home, but I think that they can do a better job and preserve better view corridor. So on that, with a lot of other reasonings I could give, my short answer is, I'd like to see it go back to the planning commission for a better design collaboration with the architect and the owner and the planning commission.
Okay, Ray, you're up.
Mm-hmm. Well, it should've been, probably one could infer from the questions that I was asking of staff, that I think that some of the things that was the intent of the ordinance have not been fully analyzed by the planning commission, and I think part of the reason for that is that it wasn't clear that the council wanted them to do that. And so as a consequence, that's where I think some of the confusion is. According to the way I read the original staff report that Laurie was referring to, the story poles were supposed to be kind of the key, and not the photographs from way the hell out there. And, and that refers to, quote, "visual impacts." It doesn't say, in that sentence, it doesn't say visual, what specific visual impacts, it just says "visual impact." And then it gets into public views of other kinds of things, and it mentions the bay and the lagoon and San Bruno State and County Park, and of course, in the specifics of the photograph part, it only refers to the views of the San Bruno Mountain Park and the ridgeline thereof, and the photographs. It seemed to me, the way I was reading it, the original staff report and what I think was intended, because it comes from the general plan, and it says in the general plan, "Consider amendments to the zoning ordinance to provide for site plan review to assure that identified vistas and public view corridors remain accessible for public enjoyment." Now, to me, that doesn't mean something you photograph from way far away, that what the author, and probably was Tim Toon, was trying to do was to find some kind of empirical measure that could be used to, to capture that program in the general plan. And they came upon this, "Okay, let's try to find distant places, and if there's some problem there, then clearly that's gonna affect the entire view corridor, not just the view from that particular spot to that particular spot, but the whole view corridor." And this was just a proxy for that. At least that's how I read it. So the whole argument about the photographs, to me, was kind of irrelevant. It missed the point, seemed to me. So when they talk about, you know, this gonna maintain corridors and view vistas, you know, that's really the important thing that we're talking about here, and, you know, anything built on a ridgeline has the potential to significantly affect that, and particularly property that's at the apex of the ridgeline, which this is identified as being, this particular ridgeline. So it just seemed to me that the intent of the ordinance, following from the general plan and the original staff report, was to really look at properties in these kinds of locations, particularly prominent locations like this one, and ask the question, "Have we done the best design we can to really maintain the vistas and the view corridors?" That's the question that, to me, needs to be asked, and that's what I was looking at. And I did all the kind of stuff that everybody else did, I read all this stuff, I did all that, walking out there, walking, walked around the story poles, all that sort of thing, which you do, and, and those of us who've been on the planning commission, like, Cliff, you know, that's, that's kind of what you do, to get a feel for it yourself. And it is a subjective feel, and I certainly would recognize that. But I came to conclusion that there were certain kinds of design changes that could be done, that were not tremendously overwhelming, but would significantly improve the intent of the ordinance as it reflected the general plan, and that is to protect the vistas and public view corridors. And so that's why I asked the question, was the applicant willing to have some flexibility and try to revisit that? Because to me, it, it does have a significant impact on the vistas and the public views, the corridor. It has a significant bulk that's in that corridor, and it seems to me that we could do better with clever architectural design. And I think, as other people have said, it still would be a fine house, but it would also protect the community interest, try to do both at the same time, back to the compromise kind of thing. So that's kind of where I'm coming out, and, and I would hope that we could kind of, you know, talk about that and see if we could get some, you know, collaborative approach to this to try to deal, if other people agree that what I'm talking about makes sense, then there would be some basis for, "Okay, so what are we looking for? What are we trying to achieve? When did we know we have achieved it?" Kind of thing. And so that's sort of where I'm coming from, and I would hope we'd be open to that.
Okay. I could do basic math, and I'm hearing two to two.[1708.56][1708.56](Laughter). So, I too did, did my field trips, you know, numerous times, you know, going out and looking at how this is from the different viewpoints of even going out onto the freeway. And with me, you know, I threw the pictures out immediately when I looked at it, because I said, "This is not analyzing this, to me." Properly, I wanna see with my eyes. But I took a pair of binoculars that were 10 by 50s, you know, field binoculars, just to see what it would look like through the binoculars, and neither matched any of the pictures, you know. It was kind of like where you were, Lori, that, wow, that's like way different, you know? So I went out to the marina, went out to the fishing pier, I looked at all the views from there, both through the binoculars and through my naked eye, went out on the freeway, you know? Say if Bay Trail went down the freeway and made a boardwalk or something like that, for some unknown reason that happened, what it would look like from there. And the most significant impact that I saw was kind of on the south end of the lagoon from that corridor. I didn't see anything from the community park, of course, but on... But on the south end of the lagoon, I could say, well, that's the most significant impact. Then I look at it from, you know, a construction eye. You know, I have a construction eye, I feel. I look at things, how things are built, how they're put together, you know. It's why I, I look at how much dirt's being moved, you know, what the, what the intent is, what they're trying to do there. And I'm taking, then I start adding figures in my head to it, you know, going, my God, man, this is gonna cost a boatload of money before they're even out in the ground. You know what I mean? This is significant, significant. You know, yes, we'd probably lose that one. Do I consider it significant? No, I don't. I, I agree with what Laurie said, is I, I don't think that's what the intent of, of the ordinance was. I, I think the planning commission did a good job. I think they did a stand-up job. And it's not an easy decision, because there is a lot of emotions here, you know, folks are riding. And I drove around Brisbane and, you know, I drove by Beth and Stor's home and I said, God, you guys are losing that magnificent view if this gets built, you know. And Danny Ames, kind of the same thing, you know, that those. But that's not what really this is being addressed. You know, it's being addressed from the other end, looking up at the mountain. And, you know, they can dig that thing down and down and down and it's still gonna have an impact. And, you know, it's like, at what point, you know, you're gonna cut the roof, you know? You're gonna end up with a cracker box. Yeah, they're maximizing it. And I think, you know, it's admirable, you know, as doing it as a family home. It's a real Midwestern view, you know, that, you know, I mean, not too long ago, folks that moved to California came here with multiple families that lived in the same house, albeit Barbara Ebel's thousand-square-foot home, you know. But times have certainly changed. And really where I'm coming down is to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's decision. And that's where I'm at on this.
Can I? Do you really feel that they did the best they could to design this home and be sympathetic to Brisbane and its ridgeline? Was this home designed for this site or was the site designed for the home?
Well, what I really feel, I mean, if you, if you, if you really want to go there with that is, I don't think that anybody's ever gonna be satisfied that's against it, because there's gonna be impacts regardless.
No, there always is, but...
Yeah, I mean, it, it really is. And it's like, is that what we, is that the message that we want to send? I mean, to our planning commission, goes through all that. And, you know, I know our citizens, you know, the, you know, group that will be disappointed with it. But at the same time, I mean, it's looking at this fairness. I think this is, this is a fair judgment.
Well...
And, you know, it's, it's one that we'll take, go back and take a look at the ridgeline ordinance. But, you know, those things are written to be vague, I think. You know, if I can point over to the city attorney that if you draw that black and line, black and white and say that nothing will be built on the ridgeline, we'll open the pocketbook because we're gonna be buying that as a taking, if that's my understanding, you know.
Well...
And I'm looking at the city attorney that that's probably the case. And I don't view this as valuable open space. And, you know, quite frankly, it would be very expensive open space, so...
I'm not, I'm not saying that nothing should be built there. And I would never say that, because I think that a better home could be designed that had fewer impacts. And I would want to see that happen. I, I think the bulk of this home, in the location it is, it is a very high-impact view corridor as far as people driving by, people coming into town, people leaving town. And, and I just am disappointed if we cannot get something that's a bit better. Because I don't think, I mean, I think the, um, the Hillside Development statute that Ray pointed out does say that it should be designed for minimal impact. And I think that this home has not done that. And that's besides the ridge, ridgeline ordinance. But we've had a lot of discussion and I'm sure that, you know, sometimes people will be swayed and sometimes they won't.
Yeah. Go back and, you're, you're basically asking them to go back and redesign it. And...
Make some modifications, yes.
I don't know, that, look at staff, you're, you're talking, you know, it could be a major undertaking, you know. And I know these folks have already put in a lot of money. I don't know if they got a boatload of money or what, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to move forward with this.
Well, I...
Because I, I really don't think, Terry, that we go back and just send it to the planning commission. Yeah, you might get a, a foot here or a foot there. And if you call it, that's a better design than, you know, maybe. But it's also very time-consuming. I mean, I hear from Karen Cunningham putting in a month's worth of work, basically, you know.
Oh, it's, it is a lot of work. And to get a, a really good product, you do have to put in a lot of work. And I totally appreciate the amount of time that the planning commission and staff has put into this. But I think that where we failed was not asking for those changes to be made before it went through all the process. And, and I feel tremendous sadness for the process that the applicant's been put through. It's, it's gotta be terrible. But I think they were advised when they purchased the property that these plans were not written in stone and that they may need to come in and make some modifications because of the new ordinance and because of the fact that that permit had expired. And so I don't think it's too much to ask to have that happen.
If, if I may, can you be specific to what things should be changed to, to, that, that would result in your satisfaction?
I think that, I mean, I am not a designer and I am not an architect. And I would like to see the roof have some breaks in the roof line, have it drop down so that it, it didn't have as much bulk coming up from, as you're approaching or what you see from the bay. I think that at the, you know, maximum lot coverage, that they have a very bulky structure. With the interior courtyard, it makes it even more bulky because you're, you're not having that count towards your FAR. So that makes your shell larger. And so I think it can be stepped down and still be a tremendous family home, multi-generational family home, without having to have as much impact and the big square facade that is all you're seeing or the, the envelope of the, of the structure. But I'm not an architect. So I couldn't tell you how you could achieve that or on the slope or how you could do that. But I'm sure their architect could, could come up with something or an architect could come up with something.
Sure. We also have to, you know, look at what are our guidelines? And have they stayed within the guidelines? So, and they have. So we're asking them, okay, you stayed in the guidelines. And now you also, that you, we should have you modify the, you know, the, the look of the house. And I, and I, and I hear where you're coming from. And I think, you know, I want to touch upon what Laurie had said. You know, to deal with the ordinance now and then, and then be retroactive to then apply that to this particular application, I don't think is appropriate. Moving forward with the ordinance and providing more clarity, I think, is appropriate. And, and those things that you talked about, I think, should be applied to what we have, should be applied to what we want the ordinance to be in the end.
I think that the ordinance was put in place and is in place that talks about views from, of community value. And I think they are of community value. And so I don't think we're retroactively applying an ordinance. It's an ordinance that was on the books before these people purchased the home, before they submitted their application. And they should have been advised that this was not an approved, ready-to-go, done deal and that changes might need to be made. So it, if, it depends on, and I understand when you say of community value, we all have different values. And I would stick by mine and say that I think that this could be a better project.
Yeah, and that's where it comes in, it's purely subjective.
Subjective, yeah. But I do think, though, that some of the things that you had mentioned could be applied to improving the ordinance, you know, so...
Stay late and a dollar short.
Well, we have made a motion. So Laurie, is Terry's argument swayed you in any way?
I'm wondering if it's appropriate, when it would be appropriate to ask the applicant what changes they would be willing to make at this juncture.
Now would be an appropriate time to ask that question?
Okay. Would the applicant come up, please?
Can you move forward to the microphone, please?
Mr. Quoc and I were discussing, he, his suggestion was to describe the changes that we've already made. You've asked for, what, a recommendation for additional change. And so that's something that he and I haven't had the opportunity to discuss. I would like to, I mean, I, it's very easy for me to make any number of decisions for my client, but that's not really my position. I do this in consultation with him, I don't do it...
Open meeting.
Anyway, I, you know, to that end, we need to talk about what it is that he might compromise with that might be able to help you.
Sure. We did make the change, make the bulkiness of the house smaller by removing all those corners. Before, the original plan, they have a lot of corners like, like coming out. So we cut that, we make it smaller. Cut off the chimney, remove the chimney. And the roof, it was like...
The roof is the same pitch and they...
Yeah, but it's changed it... It's two feet lower.
So it was thirteen feet?
It was, well, now it's twenty-seven. Before, you guys saying it's twenty, twenty-seven, but actually it's only twenty-five. So we, we did make some change already. The, the roof is like three feet, right? We cannot go any lower because of drainage problem that...
Yeah, we don't, I don't want it to go any lower. I've recommended him, the previous plan was a hole in the ground, very difficult to drain, had underground drainage clear to the edge of the property, the eastern property line, downhill end. So when we first met, that was the first suggestion I had.
Over to the microphone, please.
Yeah. When we first met and talked about the original plan that had been approved, I had met with Ken. He assured both Mon Quoc and myself in separate occasions that the house wasn't approved, that there wasn't any continuation of the original approval. So Mr. Quoc and I met and we talked about, first of all, the setbacks had changed. The front setback of Thomas had shrunk, the setback on the north side, the adjacent eighty-eight Thomas had increased by five feet. And we also knew that the original topo I had wasn't accurate. And so we hired a new civil engineer, we got an accurate topo. He also straightened out the street issue, which there was, there were errors in that plan as well. We've assumed all the agreements with the original street widening plan as well as the habitat conservation plan. And I might add that when I met with Ms. Mizell, who was the biologist from, is it TRA?
Thomas...
Anyway, this was five years ago, this is oh-five or seven years ago, eight years ago. She didn't limit the habitat to only that eastern corridor, the abandoned street. She talked very, we talked excessively about the San Bruno side of the property as well. So it's really both sides of the property that are, encompass this incredible planting plant. It, it, it does extend all the way to San Bruno. And it goes down the hill a considerable distance. It's, it's a major undertaking for whoever develops the property. It, it will be a huge provision for the natural environment. Birds, butterflies, I mean, they, there are three or four plants, a lime, a lemon, and a few peculiar plants that may not even sit well in this particular climate. But the entire bulk of the landscape plan came first from the habitat conservation plan and then secondly from my sunset directory. And I have a, you know, everything came from either a butterfly, how do you say? A butterfly-supportive habitat or plant scape or from something similar out of the sunset book. I, I have complete confidence that ninety percent of the plants are directly related to development of a, of a rich habitat that isn't just a butterfly. So, you know, as far as the, I understand this issue of, of the building and, and its impact on views. And when I look at it is, you would have the same impact if I built a ranch-style house. This house is approximately seventy-two feet wide and sixty feet long or vice versa, depending on how you look at it. And the only thing that gives it bulk is the plan view, which you won't see until you climb to the very top of Mount San Bruno. All you're gonna see is one elevation or the other. Looking up and you'll see the broad elevation capped by the roof and you won't see what's behind it from virtually any angle because of direction of view. So for instance, from San Bruno, you're gonna be looking at a sixty-foot-wide building. You know, I don't see it as massive. From the downhill end, it's a seventy-two-foot-wide building. Again, there, it's, it's actually, and I, I have some minor disagreements with the heights that have been calculated as well. I used, I know them, I think, pretty intimately. It's sixty-four, one hundred and sixty-four feet at the low end. And the, the ridge is one hundred and eighty-nine. We come down about a foot and a half, it's about three feet of roof, that'd be the midpoint. So I get about twenty-five, maybe twenty-five and a half feet as the height of the building at the low end. I just, the garage, it's a tall garage, but it's on the, the north end, the uphill side. If I were gonna, if I were to, you know, step a hill down, I mean, a house down a hillside, I'd start with the highest part up there and I'd work my way down. I don't see how that is gonna impact, I mean, virtually anything. It's, you know, it's a ten-foot-tall garage door, the one, the other two are eight-foot-tall garage doors. Yeah, it might fit a tow truck also, but it's, it might just fit a, a large, you know, vehicle, that tall vehicle or anything that, I don't know, come up in a person's lifetime, so... Treescape, you know, that, I complained about that both to Ken and, and at the first meeting. We've asked, you know, a certain height of tree and is that gonna block a view or something? We've asked, you know, a certain height of tree and is that going to block a view or something like that? It's going to take twenty-five, fifty years for most of those trees to mature to a a height where they're going to be in conflict with with a view. They're going to start out and be, you know, the five, seven, eight, ten feet, you know, for the first twenty years of their life. Most of them are the kind of small native the cherry trees, the sour cherry trees that I mentioned, you know, they'll grow fifteen, twenty feet tall as a bush. There'll be a dense screen and they are set essentially along that southern property line. Again, it's going to take, you know, fifteen years for them, twenty years for them to get that big. The slow-moving trees, the arbutus, the some of the sycamore that I think I did pull, the real native trees, it takes forever to get to their mature height. I I, you know, I I think that we did some due diligence, a real attempt to to soften this impact on the community, to to work with both Mr. Quoc's interests as well as the community's. And I, you know, why, you know, in my business, yes, you know, we can throw anything out and we can start over and happily do so, but at a time and expense. And 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 I don't know that anybody, you know, great architects who show up. I mean, you guys had, you hired a great architect to work on your city plan. He got as far as he did and he was let go because the community didn't appreciate his solution. You know, that can happen, that will happen with everybody's attempt to work with so many people and with such a grand scheme. These, this is a beautiful community. I love Grisbane. And I've given it a lot, I mean, I've given it a great deal of consideration and things might be different if it were my home, it's not. I am this man's employee and I am happy to to have served this and done, you know, presented him with this bit of work, so. You know, if there are specific things, he and I can talk and we'll have a meeting this evening or tomorrow and and talk further about, you know, something that he might offer you. But tonight, I really believe that we've, I know Mr. Quoc has listened to me and we've made, I think, significant changes. And at the same time, it's much the same house that he asked to have built. It's a compromise.
If I could ask a specific question? So it sounds like what you're saying is lowering it in elevation would cause runoff and other problems and is that what you, I think you said that at the last meeting?
That's the issue.
Okay.
I don't believe there's ever going to be a runoff. I don't believe there'll ever be a runoff problem. The the soil is very stable. It's it's essentially a rock ridge. And the the loose soil parts are the degradation of soil over over a period of time. But that is, what we're left with there now, the soil, it happens in the low end of the property and the the most, the bulk of it is rock. And as we do our work, we're going to remove rock. We'll take whatever soil, finished soils we have and we'll stockpile them, they'll be used for the planting and and for finished landscaping. I'm I'm not worried about drainage at all, that'll be handled just as a as a matter of construction. We, you know, write everything from erosion control measures during rainy season and then all the way through. That landscape plan, a lot of issues directing towards where runoff will occur, where I've focused it, you know, gathered it, and then how to how to prevent erosion. A lot of rock, a lot of landscaping to to that end. I I feel very comfortable with those recommendations.
Okay, question as to the the height. I believe I read that the top floor height was at eleven feet and there may have been some.
That's the wall height, yes.
Okay, there may have been, I believe, from the public comment, some suggestion that it be reduced to nine feet and I wanted to get your thoughts on that. That seemed like something that would be less burdensome than reducing the entire elevation of the building, but just reducing the height by two feet on the top floor.
I I understand and that's true. It would be.
I'm looking for small changes that would, you know, address some of the public's concerns yet not be burdensome.
I understand and that's, again, a point. That is a subjective question you've asked me. Yes, we could do that. We could, I could make it eight feet, seven feet, six inches is the minimum that the code allows. Today, a lot of people, these these homes, because of their cost, because of the amount of work that goes into them, a lot of people are making, I mean, I'm not proud of this, but a lot of us are making statements about our our homes as so it's a statement of of presence, of satisfaction with 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 yourself and 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 I think that, so this home, he compromised. The original plan was a twelve-foot ceiling and it was ten-foot ceilings down below. So he made the ceilings down below nine and he made the ceilings above eleven. He took a foot out of each and that's where we picked up this two feet by bringing it out of the ground. We left the ridge at the same place. Okay, so we just, by eliminating a foot here and a foot there, we brought it two feet out of the ground. And we left, as I say, the ridge is exactly as it was in that previous approval. So, yes, and maybe it would be done discriminately. That is, you know, one roof might be lowered because it's the garage. But I don't think that's going to, again, the garage in particular is in a location where it's not going to affect our sense of this building decreasing in size.
Well, what is on the the side of the building that's closer to San to San Bruno Avenue because there's been some.
San Bruno, that's where the living room, kitchen and dining room, in that order, living room, dining room, kitchen, in that order, on San Bruno's side. Living room is hall space, you know, dining room doesn't need to be, kitchen doesn't need to be. On the downhill end, the the great room, you know, asks to be a large space, tall space. So there is, that's one that as an architect, I wouldn't recommend he changing. The other spaces, I don't, you know, I, again, he's asked for this and I've given him what he's asked for. So now, again, I, you've really put me in a terrible spot here.
Well, I understand, you know, you're not in a position to to make any, you know, any agreements on behalf of the applicant. But the applicant, Mr. Quoc, you did say that you might be wanting to make some small changes, so what 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 did you have in mind?
The neighbors complaining about the garage being too 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 tall, too wide. We can make it down to like all three of them eight feet. I mean, same same size on all three garage door. And but by lowering the roof line anymore, I mean, eleven feet for a new model home, that's that's pretty pretty good. By by lowering anymore, it it doesn't look like a nice home, you know, and I don't know, I mean, I really don't want to lose anymore, you know, the height of the house. I mean, we can plant trees that will not grow above the house by doing that and make sure that all those trees will not block any more of the views and will not go above the house. And if it's above the house, we're going to trim it and make sure that, you know, it doesn't block any more views from from the neighborhood, you know.
I have to say that my concerns of the planting of trees was more the opposite, that the screening of the home from from the view corridors, more to screen the home than from the trees being too tall. I was I was on the opposite side of what, how it came out from that, but.
I didn't have any other further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So. Kind of hinges. Kind of like batting back and forth here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not swayed.
You know, I I I I'm not either. I mean, I think, I mean, it is difficult and I, you know, I understand, you know, how people feel about it. But would two feet make that much of a difference? You know, maybe some folks other say, yeah, two feet would would make a difference. But, you know, we're asking the applicant to make this change out of the goodness of his heart. You know he doesn't want to do it. And I I think we've already, you know, dragged out his 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 application pretty long. And I think now it's time to say, okay, we've we've heard, we've heard everybody and, you know, let's let the guy move on and and build his home. I think in the end, it will be, it'll be okay. And I I don't I don't see it being the the huge concern that it will impact people's enjoyment when they're on the Bay Trail. I think people will have issues with it looking from their homes out to the bay and and but we can't, we can't deny someone to build that house because of those reasons.
Laurie?
I don't really have anything further. I mean, I I've I I've pretty clearly stated my position and, you know, I'm wondering if we might want to continue the hearing to allow the applicant to confer with his architect and come up with any potential mitigation such as lowering the garage to eight feet or any adjustments on the height. You know, I do understand their concerns that they do want to still have a, you know, a decent height on their top floor. So I I can put that motion out there. I don't I don't know if Ray has any further thoughts.
I'm not hearing that he wants wants to do that. I know the architect, you know, making suggestions just off the off the hip, putting him in a bad situation, I guess, so.
I think anything better that we can get would be better than what we have. And I think that any mitigation we can do to preserve the view corridors and the 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 bulk of what we see is going to be a benefit. And I'd like to see us try to get something. I really would.
Let me ask the attorney if what would the procedure be if we asked him to go back and take a look regardless of what their answer is?
There there are several options that that you would have, again, depending on the on the council's pleasure. One option would be to deny the the appeal, approve the permit, but subject to further conversations and discussion with the the planning department, the architect and the applicant in an attempt to reach agreed concessions or modifications to to the plan. The the issue there is that there, I mean, it it depends on the the good faith of both the 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 city and the and the applicant in terms of trying to reach a compromise. And there's no, there's no ability to impose anything under under that type of an approval. The other option would be to continue the hearing for a period of of a week or two weeks, whatever is appropriate, based on the council's schedule. Request that the the applicant and his architect confer, talk to the planning department. And at the next meeting, when it comes back, report back in terms of whether there is any any agreed mitigation that the city and the the applicant have agreed upon. And if not, then the council will then have to make a decision at that point whether to approve it as currently under consideration or to take some other action. So those would be the the two options I would see for the council at this point if they wanted to to pursue those further discussions.
If I may ask a question then to Terry. So say we did number two and continued it for about a week and asked the applicant to confer with staff. And say they came up with the conclusion that nothing further could be made, what would what would your thinking be then?
Well, I would certainly hope that they could come up with some concessions. But to if there's no concessions able to be reached, then I don't think my opinion would change because I think that it does need some concessions. But, I mean, if if I don't have this, the consensus of the council, then there will be, and and we don't have an agreement that we'd like to see some concessions made, then there would be no reason for the applicant to come up with any. If it's a foregone conclusion of of how it would play out. I think that we would need to say as a group that we would like to see some concessions. Or it it it's hard to negotiate when you're already against a wall and you have no no incentive, no stick, no carrot to be able to make those negotiations.
Yeah, I, you know, I I think if the applicant, for me, if the applicant was asking for a variance, then I could ask for some kind of concession from them. But since I feel that they've followed what we have in our ordinance, in our in our codes, and then to ask for, to me, I think, I think is not appropriate. I mean, I I'm glad that we've we've had this, had these meetings, you know, to air it out. But, you know, I mean, it, if things were written different, then, yes, okay, and then we could look at something. But but this is what it is, this is what we have to deal with, just like the planning commission dealt with what they had. And so I you know, and I don't want to like say, well, if it was, you know, a larger project and a, and a, oh, you know, if it was a larger project, if it was a commercial project that had, you know, a lot of square footage, yes, then, okay, but this is this is a single-family home. Granted, it's a large, single-family home and it is in a prominent location. But still, I I just don't think it's fair to ask for concessions.
Well, the planning, the the staff report did find that it impacted the views. And so that is something that is in direct conflict with the ordinance that we have. And so on that basis, I think we should be able to ask for some concessions and for some modifications to come back to work with staff to try to make something a little bit better.
Yeah, Terry, quite honestly, anything that's going to be built there is going to impact the views. I I think that's, I think everybody understands that, no matter what, unless you're digging a hole. You know what I mean? It's, there's going to be views impacted. It's just how significant, and that's where the subjective part comes in.
That is where the subjective part comes in and that's where I think we should ask for some modifications.
I hear you, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, you know, I just don't agree with it right at this point. I think, you know, we've kind of beat this one to death. And, you know, I've heard a lot of good testimony, everybody coming up with good arguments one way or the other, you know. But I'm willing to deny the appeal and support the planning commission's decision. And Laurie, I'm I'm looking at you because I'm not swayed and Cliff's not swayed and Ray has his own stuff.
Let's let's hear Mr. persuasive.
I'd like to hear what Ray has to say.
Yeah, well, I I hear the different points of view and if we vote, it clearly will be a divided vote. I find Terry's arguments, for me, the most persuasive. Trying to find some kind of compromise is is difficult when you have a divided vote. Trying to find some kind of compromise is, is difficult when you have a divided vote, because you only need one more vote. So I agree with Terry that that kinda lowers the leverage, to say the least. Um, if somebody were to make that motion, I would support it, because at least it gives a little more time to try to work on it. So it's, it's, it's better than just, uh, approving the current development proposal. Uh, so, I don't know, if, if, uh, if Laurie's willing to, you know, to make that motion, to the second motion that the city attorney recommended, uh, and if the applicant and the architect are willing to, you know, look at some of the issues that have been raised and come back with some additional suggestions, and then we see where we go from there, that at least gives a chance for further conversation. So I'm in favor of that.
Thanks.
We're putting this all on Laurie.
That's what you get when you get elected?
Trial my fire, man.
That's why we needed that fifth person.
Nice move, Ray. If Laurie's willing to make the motion.
No, I...
It's really up to her.
Well, I, I believe that if the design can be mitigated, that it is worth pursuing. So I feel we would be remiss if we just went ahead and denied the appeal and approved the project right now, um, given that there might be some room. As to the first option, denying the appeal but approving it uh, subject to further discussions in the hopes that we can reach some sort of consensus, I don't see that as having any real meaningful, um, negotiating, power for the city, because once we've denied the appeal and approved the permit, then it really doesn't leave us with any leverage to ask for anything, um, from the applicant. So I think that we need to go with the second option of continuing the hearing and continuing the discussion, uh, for about a week to see if the applicant is willing to make modifications, and then we can make a decision on whether or not to approve those applications. I think if we make that decision now, then we've lost any authority. So I would...
I, I don't know if we have any authority either way.
Or any...
But, um, you know, what you are suggesting is perhaps, you know, giving the applicant, you know, some time to discuss it with his, um, his architect, maybe find a way to, to modify it somewhat. And, um, whether or not that would be to your, your satisfaction, Terry and Ray's, who knows? But, um, I will, I will, if that's a motion to continue it, I, I, I will support it.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we continue the hearing for about a week to request that the planning department speak with the applicant regarding potential modifications, and then we will reconsider the issue and decide on whether or not to deny the appeal and approve the project or not with those modifications if they are agreed upon. Is that clear?
Clay?
One, one important point to note is that the, because the public hearing, uh, has been closed on this matter, then there, there wouldn't be additional testimony or additional evidence. Uh, what the council would be doing would be continuing this with the, the testimony evidence before it uh, for the decision and the, for the discussion next week, but again, without any additional evidence.
And I think we've heard plenty of evidence. And we, we understand the, the concerns on both sides, and so I think, I think that would be fine.
Okay.
You made the second?
I made the second.
Okay, we have our motion and a second to continue this, and, uh, applicant, if, uh, is this clear, or are you confused on what we're about to do here?
Mr. Mayor, when you're done with them, could I speak?
Sure. The architect, uh...
I'm a, uh, I'm a friend of the family, may I speak?
Clay, just give me your name for the record.
My name is Carl Tang. I've been a friend of the families for over thirty-five years. Uh, when we first came to the United States, we lived in the same apartment, ghetto apartment complex together, and we have worked very, very hard to accomplish our American dream. And, um, when council members do use the word leverage, in our culture, we try not to, um, use leverage. We try to give face, and, uh, we try to work with each other, um, to resolve problem in a harmonious way. And I believe the Quack family, having known them for this long, uh, we share, uh, same family value. No matter where we live, we try our, we have always tried our best to improve the neighborhood we live in. Um, I currently am myself a, um, a member of the homeowner association in the Crocker neighborhood. I work closely with the Dade City's, um, city hall and the police department to improve the, um, the property, um, and, uh, increase the property values in my neighborhood. And, um, having come out, um, um, to Brisbane um, to see my best friend trying to accomplish his American dream, build his dream home, um, it's a privilege and an honor for me. Uh, I have many times gone by the vacant lot and pick up trash, because it's, was a illegal dumping site. We go on a regular basis at the bottom of the, um, the air, um, the hill there. That vacant lot, you know, um, does need to be maintained. Uh, I believe that his dream home will automatically take care of that for the city of Brisbane. At this point, I believe that, um, Mr. Quack has made, um, a number of modification on the, um, on the, um, plans already, and has, um, worked with the city and begged the city, um, to do everything he, you know, possible to make this happen. He rely on the expertise of the architect, who he hire, uh, locally, because he understands the, uh, significant of, um, the neighbor's concern. Um, he does try everything possible to address all the concerns, um, made by the neighbors as well as the planners and the city staffer. I believe that Mr. Quack is the type of person who will, um, do his, um, best effort to work with the city and all the staffer to mitigate any sort of issue that will come up, uh, as opposed to having the city, uh, feeling like they have to leverage him. There, I do not feel that this is a matter of, it, I think it's very adversarial.
Okay, okay, let me stop you there, Carl.
I could've just responded to that.
You speak, uh, very eloquently, but, um, uh, the question was to Mr. Quack if, uh, do you understand what the council's about to decide? And that you and your architect go back with the city staff and, and have a dialogue about if you're willing to make any changes? And that's what it is, and totally up to what you guys come up with, you know?
And I apologize if I misused the word leverage. I meant, you know, a good-faith dialogue, and I want it to be equal, that, you know, we're not approving it, and if there's nothing that can be done, that's it. I, I want it to be, you know, if, if there really is nothing that can be done, then, then that's the answer. But we need to know the answer, so we hope that we have that dialogue.
Uh, you asking for two, two feet, right? Can we meet halfway on the, on a Bayview side, the, the right side where it...
That's, that's the question. That's, that's...
You work that out.
Conversation you have, you and your architect have with the city staff, and then come back, so...
I, 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 I think for, uh, Mr. Quack's concern is mainly, um, where does it stop? If we make this, um, um...
It will stop at the next meeting that we have. One way or the other, it's gonna, it's gonna stop.
Right, right, and I, 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 I think that's one of his biggest fear. If, if we, um, make more modification, it, the house become disproportional. You know, the size of the house and the heights and everything else. We rely on the expertise of the architect to make the house proportional, so it doesn't look weird to the neighborhood, you know? And I, I think that, you know, we make it look weird, and we might get some new complaints, you know? And we don't want that.
We need to have, have that discussion.
Right, 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 and not, not only that, we rely on the wisdom of the, um, of the commissioner and the council member, and also the guidance of the planners. And we have worked every step of the way in, eh, reasonably and in good faith to, to break grounds. We, we, we wanna get moving on this.
We, we understand that.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and just, you know, just to be clear, I mean, you're not obligated to make any changes. All right, and, and I think that was the intent of, of where the mayor is coming from, just so that you know. But, eh, you know, we're here tonight because we're hoping that perhaps, and this was the request, you know, that have one more discussion, you know, with your architect, with the planning department, and see if there isn't some kind of compensation, you know, concession, whatever. You know, I mean, just something that you could do to perhaps address some of the concerns. Again, you're not obligated to do it, at least from my, I, I think, from some of the opinions that have been addressed tonight on this council.
And thank you for that information, sir, except that right now, we feel, we feel under so much pressure, like, you know, if we're, if we're not going to...
I don't think that's fair to you.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we extended this, we've extended the meeting, the hearing, so that, you know, perhaps there might be something. Again, if, if, if it doesn't work for, for what you wanna do,
Right.
You know, I mean, again, of course, council members could change minds, you know?
Right.
We hope that isn't the case. I mean, I hope that we've, we're acting in good faith to you.
Right, and, and we, we want to act in good faith and do everything, uh, reasonably possible. And it seems like, you know, um, I, I think our fear is not only not knowing, um, what's gonna come up next, but it's going to become so cost prohibitive that it's gonna drench his, um, his, his dream. And his parents are not getting any younger, and they want, they, this is a gift. This is, um, this is our way of honoring our parent. It's to show that, you know, we have done something worthy. And, um, and this is the way we show our respect to our parent and honor them.
It's very noble, no, I understand, so, Clay, you wanted to...
Actually, I, I think the council gave us the direction we needed, so we're fine.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. So we have a motion and a second to continue this to next week. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose, I'm, I'm gonna oppose, because, uh, I think that, uh, there's not gonna be anything significant here personally that's gonna please anybody, so... All right. That is it. The staff has the direction, so...
Make a motion to adjourn to, uh, our next council meeting next week.
Okay, and a second?
Sure.
All right. Adjourn.